I think we're gonna focus mostly on the site update than the land acquisition, so I don't think.
Okay, if you'd be willing to discuss.
Thank you, absolutely.
Just as an introduction for John, the team and John Ball and Hampton, who have been working hard over the last few weeks and trying to get this put together, so we wanted to provide an update to the committee of the whole.
Thank you.
On our progress with the target date, it was the August 1st meeting to have the cost analysis and everything ready to go. And with that, I'll let John go through everything.
Great, good evening. As mentioned, we're gonna do a high-level review of everything we've been doing over the last few weeks. We've met over a handful of times with myself and Dave in a different group and also with staff over at DPW, so we've gotten as much input as we can. What you're gonna see here today is a validation of information that was done through studies prior to us coming onboard and also re-educating us, going through all that information and really validating the different square footages, different programs that have been done over the year. So, we didn't take all those programs and take them for granted. We went back and ran and checked our own numbers to make sure that if we said the vehicle parking garage should be 100 square feet, it's 100 square feet. So, we kinda went and digested all that. That you'll see those documents in the final report validating all the equipment, all the sizes of staff that would go into the building. Currently, we have DPW one in the building, engineering and IT. So, as I go through the presentation, I'll kinda point out where and how they would land within the facility. Next slide. As she's getting at the work, Burnham down here, 53rd Street. Pretty much the layout we're working on is all the colors are gonna associate with different spaces. The red's gonna be what we call admin and office spaces. The first floor red is gonna be all DPW staff and kind of reception and feeding through like any public that would come into the building and then they would direct them. The red, the upper level of the red office space will be engineering and IT.
The IT director's here, so he's gonna make a call.
He's gonna make a call and get somebody to fix it.
Let's see how good you are, Tony. Lies on you, man.
So, north is the top of the sheet. We're gonna work ourselves from the north and slide down to the south. So, Burnham, 53rd and Rogers to the south. As we worked on the site, you'll see the northwest is the main employee parking lot and public parking lot. That entire parking lot would be outside of any fences, any gates like that. The red, as I mentioned earlier, first floor would be DPW and any greeting staff that we would have in that space. The salmon color just below the red would be all the crew leaders, the lunchroom, training room, locker rooms, you know, things like that that are associated with the crew that dispatch out of the building. The yellow across the top along Burnham with about 21,000 square foot of shops. So, all the shops, we've analyzed which shops can be commingled together, which ones need to stay apart, and we populated the different sizes and allocated and checked those sizes to prior study drawings to existing to make sure they were right sized. The green is your large vehicle parking. Right now, that's about 97,000 square feet of vehicle parking. The plan is gonna show there's actually two levels of parking. So, the site pretty much does not work unless we go to a two-level scheme. So, what you're seeing in the green layout is all the large vehicles. So, any vehicle that is over what I call a typical 10 by 20 stall that you can see out in the parking lot is gonna be on this deck. Everything smaller will go up on the upper deck. The orange is the fleet repair. So, that's 35,000 square foot of fleet repair, set up with the bottom southwest being all the inventory parts associated with the fleet repair and different offices for the mechanics, library for the mechanics, things like that would be right down in the yellow area. And then, there's a mix of medium vehicles, large vehicles, and small vehicles for repair in that bay, and they match the required sizes and the number that programs have. The far right side of that, the east side, is set up where we can also have a drive-through, direct drive-through, so a garage door on the outside, head directly north. So, if we've got something that needs to come in on a wrecker, we can do that. Or if we have the ladder truck, we can bring it in this bay here and do that. The bay to the east of that is a double weld bay. So, we can have two snowplow trucks in there getting serviced, welded, repaired in that bay there. The blue would be a wash bay. There'd be actually two bays there. One would be an automated wash and the other side would be a manual wash. And the manual wash would be set up where two individuals could be washing there at a time. Just below the employee parking lot is where we're showing the fuel island. That fuel island would be set up where it can be within gates. There's still discussion whether it needs to be within gates or outside gates. So, we're showing the gates and the fencing around that right now. That can be full circumference from a fire engine, allowed snow plows, delivery tanker, tanker truck for fuel is laid out in that coming off of 53rd Street. The bottom left green is storage building. So, that storage building is 37,000 square feet, which has an entrance off of Rogers and drive-through into the yard. Or we could also come in from the yard, south into it, and hang up a left turn and head east. Within that building, there'd be two smaller mezzanines, about 4,500 square foot of mezzanine. So, any pallet long-term racking that we wanna do that needs to be in a building, but not in a, you know, a 65-degree heated building. This would be like a 40-degree heated building would be in racking within the building there. You'll see some hatching to the south of that storage building. We're proposing we take over the Rogers and that's a 60-foot right away now. We'd put 30-foot into this site and then 30-foot into the southern site. So, Rogers would end at 53rd Street the way we have it laid out at this time. Main entrance to the yard is kind of middle third of the upper 53rd. There's also one that we're showing down here. If we deem that we didn't wanna take Rogers, we could have another entrance here. The other main entrance is in the upper northeast of the site off of Burnham. The bottom right is the salt storage, brine making area. And we're showing two, the two round circles, there's three of mine, are calcium chloride tanks. And there's room for two to six tanks down here as future growth goes. Right now, there's nothing scheduled for anything. Everything fits on this site that we're showing on this site. As I get to the later slides, I'll actually show you the things that don't fit on this site that we plan on keeping at the existing DPW site.
And before you go to the next slide, though, the green hash mark parallelogram polygon, what is that?
Yep, that's the current layout area of the existing site.
Let's overlay the McGee property on this.
Overlay, and you're gonna even see that later on. We're gonna superimpose that on the existing site, showing these and maybe how much area would take up. And just kinda give you proportion of scale, what's the difference from this site to the existing site.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, this is a blow up of the work first floor. What we wanted to point out, the orange columns. So, most highway garages you'd be doing would not have columns that'd be large full spans. But since we're having an upper deck, we gotta cost-effectively build that upper deck. So, structurally, we've laid this out, so we have all the spans and it works. You'll see the columns are actually a little bit inboard of the outer drop. And that just helps the truck get a turning radius to get into the stall and efficiently park. Kind of this area, the picture, you see that that's a snowplow with a full spreader box and wing and a grater. So, you can kinda see it, it works and fits in there. Kinda highlighting at the bottom right, you can see a little of the weld bay a little closer and then the drive-through truck bay for the fire engine or multiple vehicles that they want to be towed in. There are multiple points off of the green that we could also come from the green and go right into repair. These are things that as it goes forward as a project, you fine-tune that with staff. And we touched on it a little bit when we met with DPW staff. How many times you wanna do that? Because you start losing wall space that can be for fuel boxes, bug fluid. So, you don't wanna line that whole wall with doors. So, it's working with staff to make sure you're doing the right number of them. This hatching you're seeing in this area here is the ramps that go up. So, the way this is set up, can you back up one slide?
Yeah, there's an arrow on there.
There you go. So, we have access to the ramp from employee or public, depending on where you wanna do it, from what I'll call a front office piece, so we can gate and control who goes up there at this point. Or we have the ramp section coming from the east. So, if it's for sure 100% a city vehicle, that is a city-owned fleet vehicle, they'd come in this door. Right now, we have that upper deck scheduled. The front parking lot can hold 134 cars. That doesn't give us the required power that we need for employees. We need anywhere from 145 to 160, just. So, what we're thinking is instead of growing some of those employees or employees, however you wanna do it, we have 105 spots on the upper deck that can be deemed for other type vehicles and/or future growth. So, we have a little bit of future growth on this floor and we have additional future growth up on the second floor as we grow and we can take that 105. That 105 is about half the upper deck. So, just throwing it out there. So, these are things that we will note that if the city deems that, you know what? We wanna see what the cost is just building half the deck now and you can take those as alderman's. But I pointed out, to meet the program, it's, you would be right at the program. You wouldn't have any future. So, 105 is what's stacked on that second floor. So, you'll see the lighter gray here, that's the deck that I'm gonna say from public side could get up. And the other side is coming within the green and a... And that's shown in this hatching pattern you'll see here. So, this is the upper deck, this is the upper deck. And all these columns you'll see are helping support the upper deck. As we go up to the next level, there's less column because then that would be full span. Next slide. This side, this is your current site. We rotated 5390 at the sheet. There again, that question was asked, what's the size of that? The green is the $310 square foot. Existing square foot of just that existing building is the 91,000 square feet. So, in relationship, that's about equal minus 6,000 square feet of the new green. Things that need to stay on this site are the yard waste and the residential drop site, but we want to fact that with multiple lanes so we don't have cars backing up. So, things like these are gonna be noted. This site won't be fully designed, but we're gonna fully design it so we know what needs to stay within the site. We need areas for brush and trees, snow. This will be a satellite for city crews, so there's happening one restroom over there. This lane is castings for projects within the city and this lane is cold storage. So, some of these buildings could stay and we would just need to get in inventory exactly what they... The X you're seeing here, we primarily know that section is the oldest section of the building and probably wouldn't remain for sure. The salt wouldn't remain or the storage building here. There's been thought that maybe police, this would be an area for evidence storage or future storage for what police would need. That's just a bullet point added here that we can look into. The other thing to remember is that we wanna look at what could be redeveloped and sold of this site. You have the employee parking lot at this side here that could be looked at. Potentially, plant east could be looked at too. Next slide. So, this just helps you kinda get a relationship of the existing site with all the entities and square footage. So, the red is the new site on 53rd Burnham. This green you're seeing is the first floor green, this is the second floor green. But you're kinda seeing what would just populate this entire site if you went there. The existing, the new proposed first floor, I'm just gonna round up, is 200,000 square feet and the upper's 160. So, that gets you 360,000 square feet and you can see the site's 310. So, if you took all the areas that are new, you'd fill this site anymore. Now, we're back to the 53rd Burnham site. The area that we're showing here is the office back to the public parking, employee parking that's on gray. That is according to the environmental reports and geotechnical reports, that's the cleanest site and that's where we entertain where all the stormwater underground management would be. So, there's gonna be no above-ground visual ponds on this site. There's no room for them. It would all be underground storage, similar to what you're seeing in an image there on the left. So, now we're on the upper deck and you can kinda see now that we have less columns and all the parking is gone to perpendicular standard, what I call parking lot parking. Off that, we'd have inventory storage on the north side, 15,000 square feet mechanical. The red is the IT engineering area and then the lighter tan there, there again, is crew. The repair bay is full height, 36-foot tall, and it would have a mezzanine within that. Otherwise, that's a full-height space. Same thing with the wash bay, that's full-height space. The entire roof would be solar-ready. So, if the city would deem to, when the project is worked with soil lot, you know, we'd recommend that structural loads would take it and be ready to go. I went through that pretty fast. Questions, concerns? But really, our goal is to make sure you know where we've been and to make sure... Double check this. So, our goal is to get from you guys what additional things you'd like to see, what you're gonna expand on or, you know, where to go from here.
You talked about storage tanks. What if technology changes and goes to hydrogen, electric? What provisions have you made for those?
We'd have to note that. I, you know, haven't looked at it that way.
Well, it's coming.
Yeah. So, it's really, the city really looking at how long that would take. Typically, what we see is to time you would ride out your entire fleet you own today, you'd probably ride out the life of the fuel island. So, you'd have to look at that, how soon you'd be turning over the fleet to make sure you're spending the money right.
What about areas if we needed to go to switch to hydrogen or, because these are gonna be underground tanks, or do we need electric charging stations in there?
So, we'll look at the hydrogen, electric charging stations we have allocated for that. And then, there again, what we recommend is you go to a certain, you know, as you get into the plan beyond the site plan, you determine how many units you'd want right off the bat. Usually, when you make the bigger jump, you're bringing in separate services that would power those types of things. But right off the bat, you know you're gonna have 10 to 15, you'd allocate that in a space like this. But we'll get on to any alternative fuels, we can make sure we address that.
You said you're, we're putting IT over there. Does that mean we're having a controlled, like, server room and stuff like that with... That's gonna be all included over at that site?
That'd be the plan.
Yeah, okay.
We have a note on the site plan, so we carry over cost, but fiber would need to get to this run for connectivity. But we have that, so we allocate it on the cost sheet. So, all those little pieces we've talked about, they'll make sure we cover the cost wise.
For the second level, the upper repair, you said it's too height with the parking structure?
Yeah, so this would be, if you're standing on the fourth floor looking up, you'll see the roof. So, there's no second deck on there.
Okay.
Just in the green.
Okay.
Yep. The green, the yellow, essentially all but this section down here.
Okay, well, just be...
Had actually two floors, two levels, I'll call it.
Okay, besides those two.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is there any part of the structure that's heated?
Oh, great question. The entire facility is heated. So, your office here isn't, that would be your standard 72 degrees, I'll say it. The green is typically 55 degrees and then the orange would get usually 65 in fleet and then same thing here, 45. So, depending on where you're at, the temperatures are gonna change. And then, the type of air is, how it exchanges the air, all changes too. So, each one requires different ventilation systems that once you get to that point would be entertained in here.
Mr. President, the transfer station?
The transfer station will remain until you're ready to go here. Once you're ready to go, the transfer station will leave.
Okay, because the contractor's, it's gonna belong to them. It's gonna be their...
No, we're the...
Oh, okay.
We currently have that service agreement with Waste Management for one year.
Okay.
And then thereafter, hoping that near future, we can go and negotiate with the city in Milwaukee directly.
Oh, okay, yeah.
For the 40th and Lincoln.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So, it's a little more driving.
Little, yeah, but not... So, what you have here is the green would be right about 36 feet tall and the orange about 36-foot tall. So, that's kinda working the structure. First floor green, where the heavier trucks are, we need 22-foot clear in there and then there's 32 inches of structure and then another... So, that's the elevations there. The yellow and the salmon don't need, they need to be about 28 feet. So, there's two levels in there, depending on how they work with the deck. The red could match that too. What I wanted to show in the red is it may be the city, the city may entertain that that red has future floors designed into it. We only need two levels now, but we're showing that as a three-level piece right now. If you deem that structurally you wanna entertain it into the foundations that it could be added on, that's why it's shown higher here. Otherwise, the red would actually come down and be a little lower than the green.
You have any areas for conference rooms?
Yep. So, the first floor in the salmon, the lighter area, would be what we call the large lunch training room. So, that could be a large conference room for full staff training. And also, within the red office spaces, you'd have different mixes of conference rooms. We took in, hired all three departments and looked at the staffing levels and put so many conference rooms in for each for different sizes. We deem like first floor right off the entry as a quick on. So, that's all kinda allocated into those, the red square footages.
So, all the buildings, the way you've got this laid out here, every single one is gonna have a different height level?
No, we're just showing you the mass where it could go.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
Like the red, since it only needs to be two levels, it probably will match the yellow in the crew area, the side over here.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, they're not gonna be separate buildings, they're gonna be contiguous building?
Correct, sir, yes.
Mr. President, question real quick. So, on page 1A104, it has some, I guess, directionality on the green space there. So, the concentrated space would have entry points, but it could be one-direction parking. Trucks would have to then exit and loop around if they didn't catch the spot they needed?
Yeah. And the traffic patterns inside are still up in the air.
Okay.
So, we could still flip the southern drive aisle to be the other way. It's really, that's an item that gets into detail like what staff prefers.
Okay.
And we have some clients that they wanna put so many units they wanna back them in.
Okay.
So, then the aisle flips. But great point, we would wanna make sure the traffic patterns would allow for more than one exit.
I'm assuming there's enough turning radius in all of these parking places and the garage and everything so we don't end up with the same situation we have today?
Yep. So, the numbers have been well vetted out by our firm and other firms and real-life centers. All these drive aisles are 24 feet wide. So, they can actually, if they wanted to leave a truck and trailer tandem in, have to drive up and still get by.
Mr. President, that's one of my questions, I guess, for efficiency. We talked about the purpose of this parking structure to be efficient, to get our workers out. You said there's enough room to get around other vehicles? Because the weight load has to be on the bottom, obviously. You said with the columns, you can't put the bigger vehicles. How would that work for the efficiency of your crews getting out in a timely fashion?
So, the way this is proposed, yes, this would increase the efficiency where we would have, year-round, we could have the packers, the tandems, the single ax, single ax dump trucks. We could be ready at a moment's notice with snowstorms. We could have the plows attached, we could have the salt spreaders on there. We wouldn't have to go outside and warm up, remove the snow from the vehicles and start them up, make sure that they're, you know, ready to operate. So, year-round, you're gonna have good vehicle protection where we don't have that. If you look on old, like, Google Maps where you see, you know, almost a third of our fleet outside that's parked. So, at this time now, we usually have to go out and attach even a dump body, tailgate, front end loader bucket, that sort of thing. So, we can easily save five, 10, 15 minutes per task just using that vehicle, especially with snowplowing operations. The amount of time that's allotted, we call in a certain number of staff and then we have to call in the second reporting staff just so we can mitigate and we can have the staff there attach all their plows and, you know, so they're ready.
When we presented to staff, that was one thing I pointed out. We're, you know, it's five to 10 minutes, but I actually challenged them, come up with things that save a minute, two minutes. I mean, you know, we want them to think and operate exactly what could save time and money in this building.
Thank you.
I can't, if I may add, is the fleet services. The way this is proposed, adequate space, if Chief Pooler would wanna use this space, we allotted space, additional space for the ladder trucks, for their mechanic to work there. Inventory would be allotted there. Hopefully, you'll have some efficiency there. But again, we will have several bays allotted for each mechanic. So, we're waiting for parts. You know, we can move on to the next project or next task. Currently, right now, we are doing quick maintenance issues on Monday morning when they're doing their pre-trip and it's in the aisle of the garage. So, the mechanics are running out there doing preventive maintenance, the quick fixes, repairs. And again, it's backing up the traffic flow within the garage area. So, again, there's a lot of efficiency. I think the spaces don't be ideal, still allow for more efficiency, more organization, and I think just a better working environment for the people that we have now, but also in the future.
So, part of the cost sheet we're putting together will give you where we feel those efficiencies are and some dollars associated with those, so you can see the facility costs, A, efficiencies are B, to kinda help you weigh the different numbers.
Mr. President? Question for Dave and Chief Pooler both. We know how big garbage trucks are today and we know how big fire trucks are today. I don't think garbage trucks are even getting bigger. When they get electric, are they gonna be bigger? No?
Maybe heavier.
Heavier, yes, I understand that. But is there, I mean, so for fire equipment, we already have the biggest equipment we will likely ever need?
I'd guess, I'd say we're at the max size with the fire truck. They're pretty ginormous now.
Okay, okay. Well, just because, you know, as things evolve, I mean, we're not building our city to 30-story buildings here, West Dallas, stuff like that, we're not gonna, not that that would matter, I don't think. We probably have...
It's above the max we would get.
Yeah, yeah, so...
So, we did broach the ideal where we're looking at maybe potentially in the future for automated refuse recycling. So, that would add on to the length of the vehicles, also the width of the vehicles as well.
Also, now they are getting bigger.
John has taken in consideration to allow for future space development for these type of vehicles, which could be added at any time. So, that would be anywhere from two to three larger-sized vehicles that would replace some refuse packers.
No.
Are we gonna go to one-sided parking throughout the city?
Well, cities that do that have a day of the week, you know, the day your garbage picks up.
Was all of you...
Because all the vehicles that will be parked there, will we have a special ventilation system?
Yeah, yeah. So what will happen in the green, you need to have so many air exchanges per hour, or a minimum level all the time. So the way our firm typically sets it up is the blue, which is the wash bay area, which is all your wet and damp moisture, you do the minimum exhaust in there, and you drag all this warm air through that to help drive. So there's, there's areas that we've done to help that. You need to exhaust all the time anyway, so there's things that you can take advantage of in a building like this.
What's all contiguous?
Though, that would also be set up with different CO2, NO2 sensors within there, that if it goes higher levels of safety for individuals, it'll go into different levels of state to evacuate even more air. If it would go in a full alarm, I think it's within 11, 12 minutes, it's got to clear and bring in total 100% new air.
Any other questions?
Just one question, I think I know the answer, Bill. Getting back and forth, using that, that area around there, is there any problems, hindrance, some of the streets? I know Nat, I'm glad National's over there, because that's, that's a big street to get around, but is there any problems that we might have over there?
Yeah, sorry, Service City?
The streets outside Burnham?
Yeah, around that area.
I would... With the current situation that we have with the transfer station, we have semis that are going, you know, multiple times within that, outside that residential area. So with this, that we would go off of 53rd Street, go on to Burnham. We could use Miller Parkway to go and get to the west end quicker. It was normally being taken right now, so actually, I think access, availability to the west side would be better.
Be better.
Some circumstances. But currently, in the residential area, we had, you know, knock on wood, we haven't had complaints regarding the trucking that's been going on at the transfer station, which is very frequent.
Good. Mr. Chair, I just want to say, I think this is very thorough. This is a very good, I, good set of plans that we have. Thank you for doing this.
And like I said, we thank the staff, they care, they get a lot of time to put input to us. We stress this is not our building, so the more we can get out of them, it fits the community.
Mr. President, one more quick question.
Sure.
Would it be fair to say that this building is big enough that if our service territory expanded to a local village, say, that we could...
There's all for expansion.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, there's expansion put into this facility.
Okay. And if you wanted to add a third floor, you could put the foundation in for a third floor.
The foundation will be there for the third floor. We've done this with other buildings, not our, our buildings. But I've seen this in the past, where there's a building on 70th Street, ready for a second floor. The extra floor never comes. Never comes.
We're always looking to consolidate services with other communities, and whether, you know, it's a partial or full service, that's certainly a possibility.
That's more diplomatic than what Marty said. Because I said village?
He did.
Okay, any other questions? If not, you want to continue?
Actually, I, this was all we had prepared unless, we weren't prepared to discuss any costs of the other site at this line.
Okay, so that's going to come in the later meeting.
Yeah, yeah. We're targeting August 1st.
One more quick question?
Sure.
For Dave. We're not composting our leaves?
We're not.
Is that because we don't have room, or we just choose not to?
Choose not to with additional staff that would require...
Okay. And so this wouldn't, this wouldn't, this wouldn't open up that opportunity?
No, it wouldn't. It would actually, the site that we would look at composting or storing is on 63rd, the current site now. So our goal would be to, once those leaves and yardways, to get and have them removed ASAP, so it's possible from that site, i.e., open issues and that sort of thing.
Thank you. Wait a minute, I was critical of you a second ago, Marty, and now I want to compliment you, and that was a very good question that you had. Thank you. I guess I'm a C now. That's right. So I'm sorry, Marty. But composting the leaves, though, Dave, it's Blue Ribbon Organics that takes our, our leaves away, so that's how, they're still being, still being composted, just not by us, by somebody else.
By someone else, yeah.
I was confused for a second. Yeah, all right, thank you. Thank you.
Sir, motion adjourned?
Motion adjourned.
All favor.
Aye.
Close, clear adjourned.